Hold on, I have it plugged in again. Oh, that's all right.
Do you have what in?
Randall?
Somebody?
Tom Grosskopf, nice to meet you. Chicken in a minute.
Pleasure.
We're on here.
All right. I hereby call the zoning board of adjustment regular meeting of September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three to order at seven thirty-three. A call to order a statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel and Coria News newspapers, and by filing a copy with the Minister of Clark. Electronic devices, all in attendance are asked to mute cellphones or electronic devices as to not interrupt the proceedings. Pledge of allegiance.
Could you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll call.
Okay. Mr. Aronio?
Here.
Ms. Brendan is excused tonight. Mr. Giannakis?
Here.
Mr. Flatley?
Here.
Mr. Rosenberg is excused tonight. Mr. Alpaca is excused tonight. Mr. Watts?
Here.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf?
Here.
Chairman Grek?
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
All right, thank you. All right, the next thing is, we have meeting minutes of July twenty-fifth and August fifteenth. Has everybody had a chance to look at the meeting minutes?
Take a peek?
Um, any changes or corrections? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve the July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three minutes?
So moved.
Second? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
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 All right. August fifteenth, any changes or corrections? Hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Tom, you want a second? Okay. Most, uh, all in favor? Aye. All right. Now, we have the pleasure of administering the oath of office to our new appointed alternate number two, Randall Watts. Welcome aboard, Mr. Watts.
Thank you. Pleasure to be here.
Thank you for not running away fast enough when I asked you.
You held on to my hand pretty hard, so.
Would you stand up, please?
Yes, sir.
We'll take it to the end.
And put up your right hand, please, and swear aye?
Aye.
Say your name. Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the states of New Jersey?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the states and the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same?
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States and in this state.
And to the governments established in the United States and this state.
Under the authority of the people?
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully?
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly?
Impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties of?
Perform all the duties of?
Zoning Board of Adjustment Member, alternate number two.
Zoning Board of Adjustment Member, alternate member number two.
According to the best of my ability?
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will not use my office?
And that I will not use my office.
To grant preferential treatment?
To grant preferential treatment.
Nor to seek personal gain?
Nor to seek personal gain.
Favor or advantage?
Favor or advantage.
Not available to the general public?
Not available to the general public.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you very much. If you have a pen, would you please sign this and then I'll witness it. All right. Okay, thank you. Now you're an official second alternate. Uh, so, now we have the resolutions. Did everybody have a chance to look at them at some point? We have the CSH Long Hill LLC resolution. Hearing dates were May second, June twentieth, July twenty-fifth. The board action took place on July twenty-fifth and memorializing it on September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Any, did, uh, any corrections or changes to it?
Can I talk about this?
Sure.
I'm not eligible to vote. Get that out of the way.
Yeah.
Um, I was at some of the meetings, but not all of them.
Okay.
I think I missed one meeting, and it was the special meeting, which I announced in advance that I couldn't be here.
That's fine.
So there's some stuff in this resolution that I have not had the chance to review. I dealt with Attorney Warner for several times offline, giving us access to Central Park. As you know, I have another role. I am the chair of the Central Park Vision Committee, and one of our objectives is to get access to that park. That was part of this application.
Yes.
I dealt extensively with our engineer, Joe, to make a plan for that, to get the applicant to get a plan for that. In the first resolution, that language was absent. Okay?
Okay.
And that's why this resolution was delayed.
Okay.
I haven't had a chance to review it. We've had other mistakes in our town where we were supposed to have access to park property?
Yes.
And it didn't go through because it wasn't in the resolution, and then it wasn't honored. I would respectfully request that this be tabled until we have a chance. We can't?
We cannot at this point because at this juncture, we're running out of timeframe for us to approve the resolution.
Okay.
And you didn't, you weren't here to vote on the final product. So because of that, we can't hold it up. Now, what I would suggest you do?
Wait a minute, wait, wait, timeout.
Let me finish my sentence.
I'm gonna stop you there because what do you mean because of that we can't hold it?
No, no, not because of that.
Well, that's what she said.
That's one of the reasons we can't hold it up.
Because I wasn't here. You can't table the resolution?
Oh, cannot, no.
If I, if I? Where is that written? Like where?
You didn't vote on the resolution, so you can't table because of that.
I'm not tabling it. It's, that would be a committee action. That would be?
That's, but this is the zoning board.
Right. That would be a zoning board action, okay? I mean, kidding me, I mean, the people present. That would be?
What I would suggest that you do is review the resolution in detail, and if you have any issues with it?
First of all, we received this today.
Can I finish my sentence?
Let it finish.
Finish.
The best thing to do is for the zoning board members that are eligible tonight, which are Chairman Grek, Mr. Vice Chairman Grosskopf, and Mr. Giannakis, to pass the resolution, assuming the thing will?
Wait a minute, you're now stating an opinion. That's the best thing to do. I don't know how you can conclude that.
Because I've been doing this a very long time, so we don't have an attorney. I'm the best thing you have tonight.
Okay, so what I'd like you to tell me?
And I'm not done with my sentence.
Okay.
And then what I suggest, because of your involvement in it, I would highly suggest you review the resolution, and yes, then you can contribute to the resolution based on your knowledge of the situation, what was going on with the town. Now, if you find there's not sufficient information in the resolution, we can always go back to it and do an amendment to the resolution. But at this time, I would, I would be my recommendation, since I'm the best thing you have to legal counsel right now, is that you pass what you have in front of you, review it, Mr. Aronio, and then come back to the powers that be once you have determined if you have any changes to it, and then we can make amendments later.
Just, just to put your mind at ease, on page nineteen of twenty-two, it just, it does say the applicant or current property owner should provide an easement to the township providing driveway access across proposed lot A connecting the township own property identified as lot one block eleven three oh one to Valley Road through the existing and to be revised access easement. So it does have that in.
Okay, so that's an easement. We talked also about actually them now building, when they build, building a pathway that ends at our property.
They draw, the, the, that's on their plans. We did, we did specify that. That's on their plans, that they have to put blacktop up to the, where the, their property ends.
So can we just unwind for a second?
Yeah.
She had her moment to speak. I just want to ask, where is it written that this, this zoning board of adjustment cannot take an action to table this? And that's question one, because that's, I think that was said, because Jerry wasn't at the meeting, we, this can't be tabled by?
It does say paving, though. It does also say.
And then secondly, what is the deadline for passing a resolution?
Forty-five days.
And when was the action taken?
July twenty-fifth.
So why are we seeing this now for the first time today?
We're not. This is the second time you're seeing it.
No, no, this revised version, why are we seeing this today? Why was this not in our mailboxes? When was it read? When did, when did this thing come out?
Well, it came out last week. I've had it.
So why didn't we get an email with it?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know you, do you actually read your emails?
What kind of question is that? Is that supposed to be some kind of slap at me or something?
I'm, no, I'm just asking a question because?
Well, that's a weird question to ask.
I stated that I would send it out this week. If you, if you wanted to see it, did you watch the video of the last?
Yes, I did.
Okay. So that clarifies then what's in the resolution.
Wait a second. It doesn't mean that's what's in the written resolution because the last time we talked about, the first version of the resolution, wasn't what we talked about in the meeting. There was stuff that was missing.
Okay.
That's the purpose of the resolution, is to memorialize the action taken by the board at the meeting.
If you're not satisfied with my suggestion?
I'm not.
The chairman, the chairman and the board can make a decision.
What's the deadline date? What's the date? The day count?
I'll have to do the count. Hold on.
When did the attorney finalize it?
Is it from the board action approving? Is that when we have the forty-five days?
So technically, board action was due by last week.
By last week?
Mm-hmm.
What date were?
We didn't have a meeting last week.
What date were you counting it from?
I was counting from July twenty-fifth.
Oh, okay. All right, okay. Um, and you said forty-five days?
Yes.
Well, August twenty-fifth would be thirty. September twenty-fifth is sixty, okay.
Thirty, July is thirty-one days.
Yeah. All right.
Nothing's if we're past the date that we were supposed to memorialize it.
Look, this thing from the beginning was, I think, not, not handled properly. First of all, we pushed a use variance through at a special meeting. I got flack from that from several people in the town. Why are we doing use variances at special meetings when people, especially a big project? It's not like somebody's putting a pool or a shed in, right? So we have to push it through, hold a special meeting in July when nobody's, nobody in town is paying attention, right, to what's going on? Then we push through one of the biggest development projects we've had in twenty years or more, and then what happens is, we have this kind of a disaster with this thing. Now it's overdue. We didn't have a chance to review it. We had it at a special meeting two months ago, and now we're first, now we're getting the resolution right now. Like, what the heck is going on? Like, to me, this is kind of bizarre. Why are we doing it this way? You know, if we, if we had a rush to get a special meeting for, to handle the application, why, why are we not on time with the resolution? Why didn't we have a special meeting for that?
Mr. Chairman, yeah. Jerry, I wholeheartedly agree with your sentiments on this. We, there were two issues that you had. One was the, the access and the pay, and the other one was the paving, correct?
Yes, well, a couple, a couple.
Were there any other things?
Yeah, landscaping.
I saw landscaping in here.
That's all mentioned.
Because if we can go through and we can answer it tonight, then we can move forward.
Well, I, I, I think we should move forward.
There's one thing on here that I don't see that was, at the meeting, was, and, and if you can spot it on what, page nineteen or wherever?
Okay.
That they said that they would put a sign at the front for the park. Remember the additional condition, that they're gonna have their sign for their property?
Yes.
But also a Central Park sign.
Correct, yes. Right, right.
That's what I'm talking about. There's a whole list of things.
I remember specifically asking for that. I am looking through the resolution more carefully now, and I don't know that I see it.
That's my point. Like, that's, this is not a good way to do business, especially with a large application.
To pass something and memorialize it and put it into action without having the stuff that we discussed at the meeting in person.
No, I understand.
This, this was distributed in August.
Okay, and this is our first time to talk about it.
This version?
This, this was minor changes. This?
This version was?
This, this version was minor changes.
I disagree.
Okay.
It was in August when I was talking to Attorney Warner about the stuff that was missing, that giving us park access.
And a sign.
That's a huge thing. That's a major thing.
And what did Attorney Warner tell you? Since I wasn't involved in any of that information?
That it was being revised. This was on our agenda in August?
Yes.
And it was taken off?
Right.
Correct.
Because it wasn't ready, because there was major changes that needed to be made to it. And that's, we haven't seen it since then.
It would have been helpful to me if you or Mr. Warner could have shared with me that you were?
I'm sorry, but I thought that was your job. I really did. I really think that that's what you do.
Well, I, I do, but only when people communicate with me.
How would you do that if you, if she didn't know?
You didn't, nobody communicated with me. You didn't communicate that with me, that you were discussing that with Mr. Warner, and Mr. Warner didn't communicate with me.
Perhaps we shouldn't be having private conversations with Mr. Warner.
That would be my suggestion, because normally I'm the one who pays the bills, so.
The only way to do that was that way, and it was, I cleared it with him. He was okay with it.
Well, I'm glad he was, because he's not the one that pays the bills.
He should share any communications that you bring up to him, issues, that he should share with the rest of the?
He should be here tonight, in my opinion. He should be here right now. Why is he not here?
Well, that was the chairman's ultimate decision. I suggested we didn't need any board professionals to pay them to be here tonight, not knowing that there would be an issue.
But if changes to the resolution are being made, yes, we should kind of always be reading them and looking at them. But if there's something like different being put in, and the first time we have to look at it is, or vote on it, is when we're sitting down, or discuss it, right?
Can we?
We have to discuss it and vote on it.
Can we add something tonight to the language?
Yeah.
But the other side has to agree to it, don't they?
Uh, they've already agreed to it. They've agreed to put the sign up. It just wasn't in the resolution. Um, but I mean, I would say they don't, they don't need to put the sign up immediately because the park isn't there. So it would be when, when the park is developed, this sign gets brought up. Because why would you put up a sign now when there is no park?
I'm not asking them to put the sign now. I'm saying that it should be in the?
Yeah, but I'm just thinking about the wording of it, that's all. I'm saying that the wording should be that a, a, a sign designating the existence of the park should be?
It's here.
It is here.
The applicant shall work, item J on page twenty.
Twenty, okay.
The applicant shall work in good faith with the township to locate a ground sign on proposed lot A that would identify, sorry, access to the future park expected to be developed on township own property.
So it is there. Yeah, that's exactly what I was thinking. Okay, so it is there. They do have a sign.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, I've only listened for fifteen minutes.
I understand. No, no.
Fifteen minutes is all.
Jerry, I'm glad you mentioned that because now we looked at it and we confirmed that the changes were at least what we thought they should be. And that's good because you're right, this is a large application, and there was a lot of conditions and a lot of things that they agreed to do that they had to put into the resolution. That's the first, you know, the first time it wasn't in there. So now we're making sure that it is in there. And that's, that was good. I mean, I'm glad that we, we did bring this up and we discussed it and we, and we came to that realization that it is in there. So with that in mind, that we do have the paving, we do have the access, and we will have the sign, is there anything else that somebody might want to bring up as far as the wording on it? I mean, now's the time to throw it. I think it was revised the correct way. That was the only concern you had with the access to the park and the sign?
Access and, and the?
And the signage.
And the improvements leading to our property.
Right, which they will do.
Which is paving, right?
Right, they are doing that. They're paving it up to that point, up to where their property ends. All right, um?
The number on page plane, okay, L?
L?
Talks about, I think there was a little bit of discussion about this retaining wall on the side, the eastern side, if you remember. There was a certain height about that, and that was one of the things I just, you know, maybe some of you recall that better. I just love another set of eyes looking at that because?
Yeah, no, that was, that's right. That's what we said.
They bear all costs.
Yeah.
There was a maintenance thing there from, I remember from the meeting, right?
In perpetuity.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
And maintain, it says.
And the applicant is the one who actually becomes the owner, right?
Yeah.
So if the owner is developing it and sells it to some other entity, that responsibility carries?
Carries, yeah.
Okay.
It's maintained with the land, correct?
Yeah, right. All right, I, I think that we have reviewed this sufficiently to determine that there are, that our concerns have been addressed in the resolution. And for the record, I didn't think the attorney should, had to be here because?
You make sense.
I thought?
Sorry, I pulled that one out, but yeah.
That's okay.
Yeah, as long as it's all in here.
Yeah, it seems to be all in here, as they say in the regu commercial. Um, all right, uh, do I hear a motion to approve the resolution of the Board of Adjustment, Township of Long Hill, Morris County, New Jersey, CSH Long Hill LLC, one zero five zero and one zero five eight Valley Road, Sterling, New Jersey, blocks one one three zero one and one one four zero one, lots four and twenty-three, application number twenty-two dash zero six Z.
So moved.
Do I hear a second? You're the only one taking a second.
I understand. So if I don't?
Well, I'm just saying.
And we take a few minutes to make sure that we read it?
Oh, I thought we had.
Is it good?
Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah, no, no, that's fine.
We don't have much else going on today, right?
No, 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 no. Take your time.
Yeah.
I thought we had looked at it. I'm sorry.
I was under the impression there were only minor changes, so I was not aware there was a discussion going on behind the scenes.
I just want to take Jerry's comments to, you know, heart and take our time with it.
Will be, fortunately, we found out that they were addressed, which is good. So we have a motion and we, waiting for a second.
So just let me clarify something. I wouldn't say that it's behind the scenes. It's like that, that implies some kind of nefarious activity or?
It wasn't, you were doing it, you were doing it.
Activity, but it was actually everything that was discussed in a public meeting but left off of the resolution.
Right, you were doing it.
You know what I mean? There wasn't any decisions made at that point.
No.
And when the attorney spoke with the applicant, the applicant had already stipulated to that stuff.
Yeah.
Right? So everything was already done, it's just that it wasn't in print.
Right, that's fine. That's fine. You were also doing it as, as the, as a entity dealing with the park. And that's, but in the future, if that's the case, give Deborah a heads up that you're, that this, that's what you discussed with, so she knows to expect something that's changed, so.
Can we also make that requisite of the board attorney?
Yes. Well, yes, he should have also.
I believe that should come from.
Of course.
As a, as a board member for other committees and boards, that's never been my responsibility.
Well, no, but since we found out that he didn't do it, maybe we should also take it upon ourselves to say, hey, Deborah, I'm talking, I, I just spoke with the attorney, and he's gonna, he should be calling you about that.
I'm not throwing him under the bus. I think he?
No, no, I'm just saying this way you get a good heads up.
They pulled the resolution and they adjusted it.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? That's what was done. I don't see how it's relevant to any?
Okay.
Administrative function, what's changed in the resolution.
Well?
The resolution's changed. It's gotta be presented to the board at a different time.
Right, right, but she shouldn't.
Why the content? That's fine, but?
She should know that that process is taking place.
Well, it was pulled.
Yes.
It was pulled from the last?
I know.
Meeting.
Does the?
So obviously something's going on.
Does the size of the easement have to be determined in this resolution? Because it just says easement. I don't, I don't recall the?
I don't, no, I, I think that, no, it's gonna be the, um?
I mean, E?
That's on the plans.
E on page nineteen, you know, defines needed, and I get that. But are we talking about a walking easement?
No, no, it's, it's a, i- i- it's a roadway. It's a road. On their plan, it was a road.
Providing driveway access.
Driveway access, yeah.
Uh, but does it say?
And then who's maintaining the easement?
They are.
They are, because it's on their property.
They do have it in there, Gary.
Yeah.
Okay.
They, they hold the paving, it's in the last sentence. They hold the responsibility for paving such access easement prior to, prior to the issuance, issuance, uh, issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
Right, so they're not putting, they're not putting in the access until they develop their property. So don't depend on, you know, Central Park being developed first?
But we can still have our access.
We can have access, but it won't be developed.
Yeah.
It won't, it'll be, I mean?
If we develop, we have to pay for it. That's the difference.
Yeah.
We develop before they develop it?
Right, we could just put gravel to, you know?
Yes, yeah, that'd be, you know, imagine.
And the way things move, they're, they're not moving that fast, so, right.
Well, are we moving faster than them? I don't know.
I don't think so.
We'll all be having tacos and dry roos, hopefully, euros.
Yeah, yeah, euros, yes.
This has to wait for short capacity.
Yes.
Yeah.
So either way is when this is gonna be done.
Yeah, right.
There might not be any other people by then.
That's true, yeah.
I got a spot for you.
Well, Ed's already in the senior center, so he'll be ready.
You want a view of the park, I think, right?
What?
Is that in there, that Jerry gets a view of the park?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Thanks, Gary. I like that. Put that in the lease, man. I like that.
Jerry gets a room with a view.
Half price for you, okay?
Room with a view, yeah.
You get, you get over by the traffic signal light, okay?
Oh, I do? Thanks.
Closer to Walgreens.
He always uses his joke. It's, it's pretty close to Craig's place, too.
Yeah.
It's all right there.
Yeah, he's gonna have an underground tunnel.
Exactly. We say conveyor belt, right over there.
I don't put it past him. That might be something. Uh, um?
So Jerry, have you gotten to get through this a little bit more?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, all right.
I would, I would really like to take it home and read it, but I'm, I'm fine.
Okay.
The major stuff is in there.
Yeah, I, I think the most important.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you for your support.
I second it.
Okay. All right, we'll call.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Chairman Grek?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Uh, I think that's the longest we ever spent on a resolution, but it's important. You have to make sure things are done right. Uh, now we have the DOAR LLC, six forty-five Valley Road, Gillette, New Jersey, block one zero eight zero, lot one point zero one, application two one dash zero seven Z. Hearing dates were August fifteenth. Board action was August fourteen, I'm sorry, fifteenth. Memorialization is today, September nineteenth. This is the one where Ann, Ann Conabistro came back to us and said, "Nix the second floor, and we want more of a first floor." Um, I reviewed it, it seems like everything's in there that we told them to do. Um. So, it, uh, is any other corrections or additions to it? Eligible.
Chairman, correct? Vice Chairman Grosskopf, Mr. Aronio, and Mr. Giannakis.
Okay, alright. Do I hear a motion to, uh, approve the, uh, resolution for Application twenty-one dash zero seven Z?
I'll move it.
Second, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we'll call.
Mr. Aronio?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Chairman, correct?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alright, terrific, now, we have, what's our next, uh, meeting date?
Next meeting date is October, October third, but we do not have any applications ready for that meeting, so, uh, I would suggest that we probably cancel that meeting. We have quite a, I, I know of several applications coming in, just haven't landed on my desk yet. So nothing's ready.
You don't think we should have a little s, learning session? I mean, you have a.
Well, unfortunately, I don't think we have the budget right now for the learning session, and based on, uh, you know, the new year, I'd like to make sure.
Alright, okay.
There's some new members going into the new year.
What, what, what happens in a learning session?
Well, we were gonna go over, the attorney and the planner were going to give us a little tutorial on use variance, uh, positive and negative criterias.
We have some newer members.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to have it, but according to, you know, I mean, we also have the budget for it.
Um, when you say the budget doesn't allow it, um, aren't they paid to be here anyway, or is it?
Uh, no, if that's, if it's not an application, uh, the, we're paying them, not the applicant. When there's an application, their fee comes out of the escrow.
Okay.
When we're paying them to do this learning, it comes out of our budget. I mean, there were things in, times in the past.
Today for the resolution, they don't have to be.
Right, so we're not, because they would, they would be paid by us.
If we're approving the.
Actually, there might, there might be some of their things that was, it might be some of it on the applicant if it was the resolution, but why charge the applicant for something that they don't need to be charged for?
In this particular case, if the board attorney was here, then we would be charging both applicants that are, have, have resolutions equally in this time.
Right.
Is, yeah, but that, that's, that would be kind of, you know, kind of greedy.
Yeah, when there's a time if we can get away with that and not charge the applicants, we try to do that.
Um, there was a time when some of our expert, uh, some of our, uh, experts were doing it for nothing, but I don't expect them to do that.
Kind of heard, you know, there was a feeling of importance that they should be here for resolutions for large projects like this, so.
Yeah, if.
And the applicant wants the resolution to be, you know, memorialized, and it allows everyone to have them here.
Normally, they're only he.
To be charged.
They're only here if the applicant has a problem with the resolution or something issue, that their attorney's here. If the, I, if the attorney for the re, for the applicant approved the resolution, then they don't expect to have any qualms about it, and they like the wording, so they don't expect to be here, and they wouldn't expect our attorney to be here either.
But all, all the time, just to emphasize, so all the time that the resolution is being worked and reviewed with the applicant, and then a copy sent us, that's all being billed to the.
Yes, yes, yeah, and, uh.
When one of us, when one of us reviews it and has a, a, a change or suggestion that something's missing, and that gets billed to the applicant as the.
If it goes back to the attorney to fix, yeah, yeah. Uh, anytime that they're working on the.
I just got a bill from the attorney, and it, you know, every, every phone call is.
Yeah, right, exactly, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Every fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
Six?
Yeah, yeah, but, um, we try not to overbill the applicant for things that we don't need them, but, uh.
Come to when I don't wanna be overbilled.
Yeah.
May I ask?
Yes.
So if the attorney were present tonight, my understanding is that the applicant would still pay for that attorney to be here, our attorney to be here?
Yes, 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 that's what we were, we were trying to avoid unbilling the applicant for something that.
Build the applicant for that, okay, fair enough.
Um, we're already being, you know, we're already accused of overbilling people, and I don't want to do that. Um.
I, I, I agree, I think what, I think what Gary was saying, let me just make sure that I understand that, I, I, I think I agree with you. On a, on a larger application, I think it's, might be prudent to have the attorney here to protect everyone.
All, well.
And their interest, and if it's, like, again, if it's a pool or a shed or something like that, I mean, they, they say this, but what could possibly go wrong?
We've had the applicant here.
Yeah, no, two sheds are.
We've had the attorney, we've had the attorney here on different resolutions, when there was a dispute over the wording or a.
Yeah, but when it's a large, I'm saying, when it's a large application like this with a lot of detail, a lot of stipulations, you know.
That's fine, I mean.
And stuff involved, if it's.
Yeah, no, I understand.
It's worth considering that, I think.
Yeah, you're right, I mean, in that, in that case.
And, and, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to spend anybody's money.
No.
Probably, you know, a budget like no other, but when you have an applicant that's a, a major private equity firm, I don't think, you know, a few hours of an attorney fee is gonna, like, really wreck them, you know what I mean?
No, no.
Well, I think in, in the chairman, in my defense, the chairman, please correct me if I'm wrong, I, I, because this, that resolution was already distributed in August and discussed multiple times, I, I don't think neither one of us anticipated any issues tonight.
Okay, but this wasn't the resolution that was distributed in August?
I wasn't aware that there were major changes, so.
So did you read the resolution?
I don't usually read it cover to cover until it's done, so.
Alright, that's fine, and, and thank you for bringing that up, because we did double check, and everything's fine there.
It's absolutely fine.
Um, what's, after the first meet, since we're not gonna have the October first meeting, what's the second, is there somebody scheduled for the second one?
Uh, not yet, but hopefully yes.
Okay, uh, and what is coming up?
Uh, well, there were a couple use variances, um, a couple use variances and some bolts.
And they all need five out of, uh.
Use variances need seven.
Seven, okay, so, yeah, just make sure when you send out the, uh, the notices for that, that you let the, uh, members know that they should be here.
I do try.
I, I, you know, I want all nine on those. Um, alrighty, um, any other old business?
No, the only other, uh, note that I wanted to let everybody know is I included in your, your materials tonight, the, uh, draft dates for twenty twenty-four. These will be adopted in January, so you have now until the reorg meeting in January to let me know if you have any, um, suggestions, changes, or conflicts with the dates. Um, just two notes, going forward, um, we will probably, the, the zoning board will probably only have one meeting in January, because in the last several years and for the next couple of years, the first meeting of the zoning board of adjustment for January, um, is prior to the reorg for the committee, which technically we're not supposed to do.
Which one is that?
The zoning board meeting?
No, but which?
Well, I didn't, I didn't put it on.
Oh.
So what I'm saying is, the first Tuesday in the month, as general, has been the last several years and for the next couple of years, is prior to the reorg meeting for the committee.
Right.
Since terms are up December thirty-first, we really should not be having a meeting prior to the committee's reorg meeting. So for this coming January, for twenty twenty-four and for twenty twenty-five, I only have one meeting scheduled for the month of January for the Board of Adjustment.
So it's the second meeting that we schedule, okay, that's fine.
Which we can always add more as a special if we choose.
Yeah.
It's up to the board, obviously, depending on the, um, applications that we have pending, but for now, um, because of the reorg dates, I think it works better.
Yeah, probably. Let me, let me ask a question on that, too. We shouldn't be hav, I think what you said was, we shouldn't be having meetings before the township committee's reorg meeting.
Right, because they have to reappoint the people that come up for a reappointment.
Correct.
Okay, so.
And our professionals, too.
So people whose term ends, there could be vacancies, the board could still, the, the zoning board could still meet, it just might be vacancies.
Technically, the board shouldn't meet, because the professionals' contracts also end December thirty-first.
Yeah.
So we don't reup, we don't reappoint the professionals until the zone, until our meeting. So they're technically not under contract.
Come at some point.
What's that?
It has to happen at some point.